Hello Reverend Meeling, Reverend Susan Meeling, Susan Meeling, Lady Meeling, Lady Dorey Bell. I've gone by a few names, I have. I've never denied who I am. I've never denied going by those names either. And so I posted on my website earlier today that I was going to upload a video to my official YouTube channel, Reverend Meeling. Please subscribe, watch the other videos that I've uploaded over the time. Go to my website, www.susanmeeling.com and look through the different things that I've done. And I have the ornery PSA that you can read my journal blog. Although in certain regards, it's kind of ironic, I'm gonna say because of not realizing that a certain someone that I've once known had apparently gone blind. And I'm glad that I have this ability to do the YouTube channel for those who aren't necessarily able to see but can hear. And so I do appreciate that from YouTube, for that at least. And so in the blog post that I had put on my website, and I know that that individual is not the only person who's blind, and so, but just in that regard, I still do appreciate the fact that this is capable. So I had posted the words that I've written for the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independence School District meeting. Either it was May 2010, June 2010, or July 2010. I think it was May 2010 to be specific, though it could have been afterwards. So as I read on the CFB ISD website, parents of different schools were allowed to have three minutes to speak. And I had told this particular family that I was planning on going to the board meeting to make a speech. And David and Tammy with their three sons, one was in high school. I went to his high school graduation. I promised him that if he had graduated high school, that I would attend. No matter what, I could, I would make that happen, and I did. I did attend. That's a whole other ball of wax. So as far as what occurred at that particular high school graduation, nonetheless, I still attended. I kept my promise. He graduated, I kept my promise. So when I had arrived at the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independence School District meeting in Carrollton, Texas, I mean, I was wearing a suit very similar to what I'm wearing now. I think the only difference at the time, other than the suit itself that I was wearing, I think I was wearing pants. I might have been wearing pants, although I could have been wearing a skirt. I don't know. I do know that I was wearing a business suit nonetheless when I had gone up to the podium. I wanted to make sure that despite the biases against me, that, well, I could prove that I could at least look professional. I mean, I know that my haircut and my hair color aren't necessarily the most normal for a professional setting, and the tattoos as well. And since I had already, I mean, I grew up in New Jersey, so you better have a couple of suits in your closet if you're gonna be involved in anything. It doesn't matter. You best have a couple of suits, at least one, that you can mix and match different things to have different looks with. And you best have at least a couple of, you know, skirts or dresses. You know, even if you don't wear them that often, you best have that because you never know when you'll need that on the East Coast. And so I had plenty to choose from at that time. And so I made sure that when I showed up to the board meeting, I was dressed to the nines. All irony and scuba diving in certain regards, right? Anyway, so I had shown up and the principal at that time, Dawn Rink, had shown up to the board meeting as if she had known or been told or whatever. And it was one of those, "I am not intimidated by you at all." Like, if I was actually intimidated by you, you would know it. And not intimidated at all. Like, if she had thought, "I wonder if she's intimidated," you know I wasn't. If you have to ask, I was not intimidated. I'm not necessarily in certain situations, but when it comes to taking care of things, oh, I don't back down very easily. And not in any offense towards those who are in school districts. However, going up against certain aspects in regards to the United States of America's armed forces, going up those chains of command are far more threatening and scary than the civilian aspect. I'm just saying, you know, I gotta give credit where credit is due because if I didn't have that experience, I might possibly have been intimidated, not by much. But in that regard, when you're sitting across the desk from a major general in his office, the school board isn't nearly as scary. It's just, it really isn't, you know, especially being on a military post. Not very scary in comparison to, you know, all the stuff that is on a military post. Just saying, not trying to be rude when I say that. It's just the reality. And those who have been on a military installation, whichever one, understands fully as to why it would be far more intimidating to go and be up against the grain in that regard than in the civilian sector. Just pointing that out. So, you know, Dawn Rink, the principal at the time, she walks in front of me, she goes, "Oh, hi, Susan." Hello, that was my response. Hello. And she goes, "So, I see you're going to..." Yeah. Nice to meet you. I was very nice. I could have like broken her hand, but instead, I just shook her hand. That's all I did. I could have broken it in multiple places, but instead, I was nice. As I could be. And I just shook her hand very lightly because apparently this is dainty. And so then, at some point, I watched Dawn Rink go up to the board members. And then she went and sat down in a couple of rows behind me. And it was one of those, "I am not intimidated by you at all, like, at all." Well, then one of the board members came over to where I was sitting and said, "Hi, Susan?" Yes, and I stood up, how may I help you? "So, just wanted to let you know, we're not going to be saying the Pledge of Allegiance." "Excuse me? Why not?" I mean, going into that exact bias that I had previously brought up to multiple people before the Fort Worth Zoo issue, by the way. And she said, "We're gonna say the Our Father Prayer instead, you know, in case you're offended." Now, obviously, they did not know my upbringing. They obviously didn't know I grew up going to Old Tenet Presbyterian Church. And there wasn't a week that I didn't actually go to church with the exception of 1992, the latter part of the year to the beginning of 1993 because of being sick. My biological mother was a deacon and my biological father was a trustee. Both of them were involved with choir, as was I. I went to Sunday School every Sunday, so they didn't know that. They also didn't know I was and am a Reverend of the Universalist Unitarian Church. So that stuff, "Oh, you wanna say the Our Father Prayer? Oh, okay." I mean, if that's who you prefer to say that to, I mean, if you prefer to conjure that up, okay. Because again, as I've referenced before, my dead ex-husband had issues with my patriotism. But if that's what you prefer to say, I mean, I'm not saying that I have an issue with the Our Father Prayer. Actually, don't. However, you know, if that's who you prefer to be your patron by your choice by doing this instead of saying the Pledge of Allegiance with, at minimum? Okay. But how ironic because I don't see a single one of you on that board or a part of McCoy Elementary School that has not broken multiple commandments. But sure, 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 okay. We can say the Our Father Prayer, not a problem because unlike some people, I am not offended by spirituality or religion. So that female, or male, whichever it was, I think it was, I think it was a male who tried to tell me that. And I was just one of those, "That's nice." And I mean that in the in a way. And again, that's one of those, if you think you're intimidating, whether male or female, that had told me that, again. Two-star general on a military post. School board official. Who would go with that two-star general? On a military post in his office. Not trying to be rude, just stating facts. So, you know, the meeting occurred and then, you know, they kind of, they, from the prior board meeting minutes, very different for the one that I was at. Completely out of order. I mean, realistically, they were jumping all over the place. It's like, I'm not even gonna go outside for a cigarette just because it's not like I grew up in New Jersey and had ever met a lawyer in the state of New Jersey. Or when I went to New York, it's not like I ever met a lawyer in the state of New York or Pennsylvania, or how about when I grew up there and then wound up going to Washington DC? Are there any lawyers in Washington DC anywhere at all? Probably, maybe, maybe there is a lawyer in Washington DC. Or maybe, maybe there's two. I don't know. I mean, it was back in the early, you know, 1990s or late 1980s. So how many could there be, you know, right, right? I mean, in comparison, you know, okay, okay, okay. Like, I haven't seen or heard about people doing stuff like that wrongly in this situation for what you're doing, but okay. You have no idea how much pressure I have taken in my life. And I am, in this regard, referring to that scuba dive. But okay, okay, sure, sure, uh huh, whatever. So in the, in the, in the speech that I wrote, I did not know that the school board would turn off their cameras. I do genuinely hope though that there were at least one person who was, I don't know if live streaming was available at that time or if YouTube was around at that time, but I do hope that there was somebody, at least one person, who was able to catch that. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying. And, and put that on blast. So I'm going to read what I wrote and said at that meeting. Now, I know I didn't, you know, introduce myself formally in certain regards. I just went straight into reading because I knew that they were going to cut my time short. Wrongly, after everything that they had already done, I already knew it. I already knew that they were gonna cut it down to two minutes. I knew it, even though I was supposed to get three or three and a half minutes. So going to, just to read this real quick. "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Most of you may not know who I am," I guess I did, put my name in it, "but I am Susan Nichols, "mother of Lydia and James Nichols, a first and second grader at McCoy Elementary School. "I come before you to address several issues, but first I will give a brief backstory of what happened. "On 28 April 2010, Ms. Hatcher's class along with the other first graders went to the Fort Worth Zoo. "My seven-year-old daughter, with the school's documentation, "she has bipolar disorder, depression, schizophrenia, and ADHD, "not to mention grief from her father's death from being killed in the Army in Iraq two years ago. "Instead of placing Lydia with a trained professional, "or at least the teacher who was qualified to deal with Lydia, "the school placed Lydia in a group of six children with three parents. "The parents and students left Lydia behind to wander for who knows how long unattended. "She was then picked up by the zoo security and taken to the guest relations for 24 minutes. "How long total was she by herself? "The next day in class, Lydia was having an emotional breakdown. "Instead of Ms. Hatcher calming Lydia down, "she yelled at her and said that Lydia was acting like a two-year-old in front of the entire class "by her own admission, to which the children laughed further. "Lydia was already hitting herself and choking herself before the comment "and before lashing out at another student the day after..." Hold on. The day after... I had this on a piece of paper, so I could actually... "...the day after the traumatic incident and the name-calling by her supposed mentor. "Now, in order to get meetings with the principal and the district, I had to write and make phone calls. "There was no initiative on the parents' part, the school's part, or the district's part "to just say that they were sorry for what happened. "Instead, it was pushed under the rug before my daughter and I were blamed "for the parents' and the school's choices. "To which I must ask, is it because I have red hair and tattoos that I am not being taken seriously? "Is it because people cannot get past my physical appearance "that they cannot see what was done wrong to my daughter? "Whether or not she was mentally disabled, she should not have been left alone at the Fort Worth Zoo. "Had it been someone's daughter of normal hair color and minimal tattoos, if any, "I doubt I would have been treated as I have. "This is a form of discrimination and I will not stand for it. "Had I been the typical Susie homemaker with my natural long brown hair and without any of my tattoos, "I doubt I would have been treated in the way I have been. "I have seen how Ms. Rink, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Hatcher "treat parents who are white, clean-cut, not half-Chinese with spiritual symbolism all over their body. "And yes, I understand I look different, "but it does not mean that I am not to be treated at least like a human being, a mother. "And that is what the parents, school, and district have failed to do for me as well as my daughter. "Originally, I just wanted a heartfelt apology from the parents, the school, and from the district. "Instead, the parents have said nothing "and the school and the district have met me with resentment and hatred for the situation at hand. "Now, the circumstances have become what they are. "I seek answers and more which are outlined in the following. "Why have the parents, school, and district decided not to come forward "and just write or say an actual heartfelt apology "instead of 'we regret Lydia became separated from her group' "As that is not saying what is sorry for what happened or an apology, "the lack of sincerity in each meeting and the letters further demonstrate "the cover-up that the school is so vigorously pursued from the start "as they still have yet to make an incident report." So it was May 2010. "In the original letter from the school, "the school said that the whole incident took about 15 minutes, "yet the zoo reports having Lydia in their custody for 24 minutes. "That does not include the time it took the guard to walk her "from where he found her to the guest relations area, "nor does that include the time that she was wandering by herself. "Why does the original letter only state 15 minutes? "In the original letter from the school, "the school did not address Ms. Hatcher's comments to Lydia "when she called her a two-year-old the day after the incident at the zoo. "As she said it to Lydia in front of the class "while Lydia was already under a desk hitting herself and choking herself, "the class laughed harder. "What became of this situation with Ms. Hatcher?" And hold on, the computer, just hit something too quickly. "In Mr. Cole's letter, it states that Mrs. Rink cares and understands my concerns and needs of my children. "If Ms. Rink truly understood that none of this would have happened, "nor would my daughter have been blamed, nor would I be blamed for my... "nor would my daughter have been blamed, nor would I have been blamed "for the school's mistake of handing my innocent daughter to three incompetent adults. "It was negligent on the school's part to leave my daughter "with the irresponsible parents who endangered my daughter's well-being. "In Mr. Cole's letter, it states that the district can adequately educate my children. "I have no doubt in that. "My fear and hesitation come into play for my son and daughter's physical safety now "and their mental, emotional, and psychological stability. "The district has proven with its actions and lack thereof "and through Ms. Hatcher and Ms. Rink "that the school and district are not prepared to deal with my daughter. "I do believe that is what and why the district should be responsible for my children's schooling "as now both of them are afraid to go and of McCoy Elementary School "and Lydia is petrified of everyone and everything associated with that school. "In Mr. Cole's letter, it states that there was an investigation of the zoo and Ms. Hatcher. "What happened? "Where and what are the parents' reasons for leaving my daughter unattended at the Fort Worth Zoo? "What was Ms. Hatcher's reason or excuse "for calling Lydia a two-year-old in front of the class, "embarrassing her, knowing how emotionally fragile she already is at that time? "What is going to occur or has become of that? "Who will now take care of the new medical expenses that are incurred for Lydia? "Who is it to be responsible for James's therapy that he asked for because he missed his sister? "Who is it that is going to be responsible for the travel expenses "that I have received from traveling up to and from Carrollton and Denton, Texas? "What about when Lydia is transferred to Austin?" Because I had found that out shortly before. "Lydia's father's memorial painting service was the past weekend, "14 May 2010 in Amarillo, Texas. "Her brother was able to attend, meet the artist, meet the soldiers, and have fun with other families. "But Lydia could not attend because of her being hospitalized because of what occurred. "I have done some research and a child with Lydia's conditions is considered disabled. "Under the Individuals with Disabilities Act, "children who fall into this category are required to have qualified and trained chaperones when off-school premises. "With that, why did the school choose to place my daughter with no medical deficiencies "and new medication in the care of three inexperienced reckless parents "instead of, at the very least, her teacher? "Though I did repeatedly ask to be there." Also, under those laws, why did Ms. Hatcher, why, also, under those laws, "what Ms. Hatcher did constitutes as abuse? "In closing, I stand before you, parents, mothers, fathers, and teachers, "in your own right to reveal the danger to your children are in. "In a perfect world, perfect circumstances exist and are responded to perfectly. "I have no doubt in my mind that McCoy Elementary, under ideal circumstances, "is an exemplary and honorary campus, "fully capable of educating children and helping them grow. "However, in a situation where the school is at fault "and is blatantly disastrous to the well-being and safety of our children, "McCoy Elementary School of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independence School District "has demonstrated ruthless aggression towards covering up the issues, "pushing blame onto others, and disregarding the damage they committed to my daughter. "I stand before you, not as a vengeful woman, "but as a mother who witnessed my daughter's mental health be eroded and destroyed "all at the callous disregard of the faculty you and I once trusted "and to give fair warnings so that the situation might not be reciprocated unto any or all of you." That was what I wrote. And then, to be spiteful, I left my papers at the board district just in case any parent would pick it up. Just to be spiteful. So while they didn't want to hear all of that, I was stopped around just before the memorial aspect from the board because they didn't want to hear any further of that truth. They didn't like the fact that what I spoke was 100% accurate. And they proved their issues that I literally described by cutting me off before my three minutes were up because I did have my cellphone right next to me to keep track of the time. So they obviously at Carrollton Farmers Branch Independence School District did not like the fact that I spoke only the truth. And they obviously did not want to take responsibility, as I proved, just by speaking. I didn't even have to actually give any evidence because their actions on that day proved everything to be true. Including before my speech, when they chose to say the Our Father Prayer "instead of or with the Pledge of Allegiance. "And my daughter and my son both were fine. "They had the issues as far as their biological father's death, as any normal children would. "It was the bullying that occurred at McCoy Elementary School that had eroded things repeatedly." And so May 17th was the day that I was told that the school district finally got the statements from all three of the adult volunteers that were at that field trip in charge of my daughter after I had been denied by Ms. Hatcher to be able to go on the field trip. I asked her in person multiple times and multiple times, "The school doesn't need someone who's, you know, like you, "being a problem for any of the children or a distraction to the parents." And yet, I had been put in charge of my daughter and four or five other children, and I didn't lose one. Yet, those three parents had, between the three of them, six or nine children, and they couldn't combined take care of them. If I'm not mistaken, if it was six children, that would mean they had two children each. And they were so incompetent that they could not take care of two children at the same time. In total, I had five when I went, and I didn't lose one. If there were nine children, then they each had three and still were incompetent by proof of the fact that they lost my daughter. by proof of the fact that they lost my daughter. And Pinnacle Point is a really good example as far as my daughter's personal issues. Because anytime one of the nurses who happened to look like one of the mothers who had lost her at the Fort Worth Zoo, she became violent towards that one particular nurse repeatedly. She was not violent towards any of the other nurses. Dr. Brown had very much, we had discussed it over and over. And just like at Merrill Creek Residential Treatment Center in Austin with Dr. Jackson, Dr. Brown at Pinnacle Point had constantly told me that, proud of the fact that I actually made each appointment, no matter what. That I actually showed up, and it didn't matter that I had to travel. They were surprised by that. Both sets of different hospitals. And am I inaccurate with the cover-up aspect? Is that where I'm inaccurate? I don't think so, because, well... Or have they taken responsibility? In my first book, Finding A Silver Lightning, I actually printed off the emails from NBC that the news station sent to me, showing me the school's response, saying that they didn't wanna talk about it, in an abbreviated sort of way. So if I was inaccurate with anything, show me where. I don't think that anybody can. I think that everybody can see exactly how accurate I was back then in two thousand ten, even before, you know, in like two thousand nine and towards the end of two thousand eight. But also afterwards, in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. And then when I published the books, the first two, Finding A Silver Lightning and Finding The Silver Lightning by Susan Mealing, proved exactly how accurate I had always been. Despite my hair, despite my tattoos. I can only speak the truth, you know? I'm gonna be all lawyery right now. I pressed my case. Hold on. I gotta do it all lawyery. Hold on, I gotta do it all lawyery. And with that, and with that, I rest my case. So please, subscribe to my channel, Reverend Mealing, and go to my website, www.susanmeling.com. And you guys have a good day. Although that part's technically not lawyery. The other part was.